All the meeting to order. Welcome to Neighborhood Board Meeting. First up on our agenda is the Honolulu Fire Department. Do you have a representative from the Fire Department here this evening?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me before I start talking?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. It's been a while since the HFD got to attend one of the meetings. So these are the statistics that I'm going to start off with for January. First of all, my name is Mark Yoder. I'm a fire captain at the Nuiu Anu Fire Station. So I'm going to go right into the January statistics. Structure fires, we had one. Wildland and brush fires, zero. We had one nuisance fire, one cooking fire, and nine activated alarms with no fires. We had fifty-eight medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle versus pedestrian accidents, four motor vehicle crashes, six mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and two hazardous material incidents. We have a fire safety tip for the month. It is to don't stall and call 911. Call 911 right away when there is an emergency. Once the operator is on the line, speak clearly and provide an accurate description of the type of emergency and the location. Remain calm. The operator may ask for additional information or provide instructions. If you find yourself in a spot where you do not have good reception for voice communications, for example, the elevator or while you're out hiking, you can actually text, text message your emergency to 911. And if you don't know the passcode to unlock a cellphone, you can push the emergency button to unlock it and call 911. And that concludes the tips for the month. I can take any questions or comments. You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for the firefighter? Paula, and we did have to mute you, Paula, so you have to unmute. Just go ahead. Well, we'll get back to you. How about that? Are there any other questions from the board for the firefighter? Seeing none.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to tell the firemen, thank you for Nuiu Anu Valley, for everything you're doing. Number one, and then I talked to another fireman, and it's a good thing to remind people to wear their seat belts. Because the fireman that talked to me said, I went through a lot of crashes and a lot of places where people were hurt. But the ones that had the belts on were able to at least survive. The others that didn't have belts on had a lot of deaths. So that's a safety factor only.
Yes, Paula, very good point. Thank you for sharing.
I thought it was interesting that he said that. Wow.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from anyone, including in the community? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Chair Smith.
Oh, yes, please. I can't see. Oh, Mike, please go ahead.
I just wanted to ask if the Fire Department does any helicopter rescue operations at nighttime?
The general answer is sometimes. Every, every incident is different. If there's no emergency, where it's just maybe a lost hiker, the pilot and the incident commander have to make a decision. Has it been done before? Yes. Is it very dangerous at night? Yes. So calculated risks. I'm sorry, I can't give you a very straight answer, but that's a very good question. Yeah.
Do you know if any operations were performed in the last couple of weeks, specifically on the morning of Friday the 16th? First, I guess it would be Friday, sorry, Friday the 13th would be.
But what is the question?
Do you know if any operations were being performed on the morning of Friday the 16th?
I don't off the top of my head, but I can get back to you on that, Mike. Yeah. Friday, any helicopter operations Friday the 16th?
Early morning, yes. Thank you.
Early morning. Yes, I will get some information for you about that. Good question.
Thank you. I think Philip had his hand raised. Philip, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Hello, Captain. I just was looking at the last report from last month. So hazardous material incidents were zero. And then on your report tonight, you had two. Are you able to elaborate a little bit more specifically on what type of hazardous materials we're talking about and where?
You know, I can't say exactly the two that happened this month. But I do know a common one that we go to is a gas leak. You know, gas lines that go into the house for dryers or cooking. If they break and a gas starts leaking, that's considered a hazmat incident. But I can't, I can't speak for the two specifics that happened last month.
Okay.
Do you want me to find out for you also about those two hazmat incidents?
Yeah, it would be good to know if there's something, you know, like, like you said, if, if gas is really common and it's something that you guys can, you know, mitigate really quickly on the spot when you respond, and that's something. But, you know, it's always when you hear hazardous materials, you know, sometimes we can tend to think of worse, maybe, you know, what's, what's floating around up in the air and things like that. But don't want to cause any alarm or anything.
No, no cause for alarm. Yeah, good, good question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board or the community? Just so you know, I, I can't always see the hand raised where I am, so if I do miss, you can speak up. Like Mike did, so thank you. Hearing or seeing nothing, thank you very much, firefighter. We appreciate it. Please stay safe, and we appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Night.
Next up, we have the Honolulu Police Department, District One.
Hello, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so Lieutenant Segusio for District One, Community Responsibility. Hope everyone's Valentine's Day weekend and week was very memorable. Sorry, Paula, I tried to send you a bouquet, but my wife wanted both of them. apologize for that. But here are the stats for this past month of January. So motor vehicle thefts for this month of January was eight. From the previous month, it was eleven. Burglaries were three. Previous was four. Thefts were three. The previous month was three. U M Vs or car break-ins were five. Previous to that was seven. Assaults were two. Previous to that were zero. Six assault graffiti cases and drug cases were zero for both months. Total calls for service for your particular area, District One, six hundred and twenty-four compared to the previous month of six hundred and seventy-one. If you guys want any more particular stats, you guys can go to the public website. It's on www.honolulupd.org. The safety tip for the month is more of a safety awareness. So there's been an uptick of thefts. I think Lieutenant Hatiko had mentioned this several boards ago in regards to Kia's and Hyundai vehicles. We're asking our community members to be more vigilant. You know, take proper precautions, you know, alarms, steering wheel clubs, parked and secured areas. We're also asking our members to just double check the website for particular vehicles in regards to this type of thefts. Due to the fact that if you check with your dealerships, certain dealerships can do a software upgrade in regards to your vehicles to mitigate this problem. So just to give you the numbers in regards to myself and District Five. So District Five and District One encompass almost fifty-two percent of those vehicle thefts, and they were correlated to some of the smash and grabs. District One and several of the crime reduction units, the crime reduction units had conducted operations to mitigate this problem. So with that being said, I'll relinquish the rest of my time to answer any questions from the board and the public attendees. Oh, oh, one more thing, yeah. So Paula, in regards to the speeding on Poli Highway, I had forwarded that information to Sergeant Kaleo Hosaka. He had forwarded it to one of his officers, Kendall Nguyen. They had issued seventeen citations for speeding, seventeen citations for speeding. And out of those seventeen, three of them were for excessive speeding. So, and that's for Poli Highway going northbound. So hopefully that could help reduce the speeding in the area. I'll relinquish the time.
Thank you. Mason. Mason, go ahead.
Sorry, Mason, can't hear you.
Yeah, Mason, you muted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to thank you for that, your Illegal Fireworks Task Force. They picked up a lot of five containers, you know, with the illegal fireworks inside. And also, I, I heard that you only, it's only gonna, there's a time limit on this task force for one year. But I think we all should kind of join in and support this Illegal Fireworks Task Force. Because it's taking some of us pressure off to find a lot of people in the neighborhood with illegal fireworks. So let's all, including the representatives that are online with us today, we need to support this, this program. Otherwise, we're not going to get anywhere. It's going to get worse and worse. Let's join, join forces and join in and help whatever we can to do to help. But I thank you again, Lieutenant, for doing all you guys done throughout the year.
Thanks. I'll pass it on to the command.
Thank you, Mason.
Thank you.
Mike. Mike.
So I do have a similar question that I asked the Fire Department about helicopter operations on the early morning of Friday the 16th. I was curious if you knew or could find out whether there was a police operation would have been about 2:00 AM on Friday the 16th. The reason I'm asking is I've had several residents contact me complaining about excessive circling by helicopter at that time. And it woke up probably several hundred, if not thousands, of people. So I do, just wondering if you could fill me in on that.
Okay, and, oh, Mike, this was in the evening time hours in regards to that helicopter?
It was approximately 2:00 AM Friday the 16th.
Okay, so in regards to HPV's policy in regards to flying at night, generally, we do not fly at night, and I think the firefighter had explained it's a very hazardous idea to be flying at night, especially when we're flying under the seven hundred feet envelope. And I don't know if you guys noticed this, but there's a lot of airplane traffic, small airplane traffic in your guys' particular area. And it's the reasoning is the wind change, because I actually contacted a person that actually is a pilot, a friend of mine. And they said that there's going to be a lot of low, low-flying planes in your particular area. They, they also fly in my, my parts of the neighborhood in that regard due to the wind change and due to the corner winds. So I just wanted to also touch base in regards to Philip's question in regards to the hazardous material call in regards to HFD. We had one of those. And I just can touch bases really quick on that. It occurred at the J T M C, which is that bus terminal area, just to the rear of the main station. There was some sort of odor emanating from the men's bathroom. And then I think two O T S bus drivers got kind of ill from the odors. We did contact HFD. We notified M E D in regards to a possible chemical spill to that. However, when HFD responded, they discovered that it was possibly just improper disposed, like industrial cleaning detergent. They had disposed it in the trash can, so they removed it, and then an all-clear was given. So that's the kinds of hazardous material calls we do get. The last thing I want people to think is that we have like weapons of mass destruction going on and, you know, all of this kind of severe kinds of hazardous material. But just, just the odor and, and just like I said, we do get a lot of gas, gas leaks. Those are the types of hazardous material, because, you know, you need special equipment in order to test the air and, and verify that it's nothing more than that. But I'll check on the, each of the low, low-flying helicopters, but I'm pretty sure that it's not the Honolulu Police Department. Are they pretty sure that it was a yellow and white bird, or was it a bluebird that was flying?
It was at night, so there was no report on color. The only indicator that it may have been police helicopters that the, one of the residents reported that there was a bright light shining down from it.
If it was, if it was the Honolulu Police Department, it would be very rare. And if there were utilizing lights to look down onto the surface streets, if, if you see a lot of police cars driving around, then it's very highly likely that it's us. But just like I said, very, very rare and far between that we would fly at night due to the fact of the hazardous situations, yeah, at night. Thank you, Lieutenant Segusio.
Thank, thank you. Paula.
I want to know what happened on February 7th. A man was hit on the Poli Highway. I can't say on the Poli, but he might have been going across the street, across the Poli, which would be six lanes. And he was hit at Queen Emma. I know we're going to bring this up later in Dangerous Roads, but this was an extremely good thing to know that it was not on TV. It was not recorded. The emergency ambulance came, the Fire Department, I don't know, came. We want to know what is going on that everybody says we can't have lights and we can't have signal lights, et cetera. If they're starting to hit a person even on a sidewalk, because the pole was down in front of Queen Emma. It really went up into the grass and the person was covered in blood. I don't want to over accentuate that, but my daughter happened to be driving past and saw the whole wreck afterward. And the person was on the cellphone. So if we can't get lights and we can't get a crossing without a light, I think this is one good example of what's going on if we can't get from the legislature what we need for the highway. So does anybody know anything about that?
I'm, I'm going to have to defer that to my counterpart Lieutenant Hatiko in regards to that, because that, that portion of the freeway by the Queen Emma Palace is, is part of District Five. I have no information in regards to that. But just like I said, we did do our due diligence and in, in, in conducting speed enforcement in the particular areas of Poli Highway, all the way up to Wiley, going northbound. And just like I said, seventeen citations, three of them were for excessive. So we'll see those individuals in court. And hopefully, it kind of stops some of that speeding in that particular area. Regards to the lights, that probably might be more of a question for the state DOT and the city to answer, yeah?
Yeah, they don't answer, but I want to just tell you, Lieutenant, thank you for listening, because that man was on the sidewalk, as far as I know. And if they're going to start hitting people on the sidewalk, we better look at the lights and we better look at what's going on on there. And we really, really chodai. Thank you for doing that for us. You can come every day if you want. That would be great. I'll give you lollipops. Who loves you, baby? Right?
Point, point taken, Paula. Thank you, and you have a happy Valentine's Day week.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from the board or from the public for District One? Hearing none, thank you, Lieutenant. We appreciate your time and all your efforts and the efforts by your, your crew. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. You guys have a great night.
Thank you. Next up, we have District Police, Honolulu Police Department, District Five.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Lieutenant Creighton Hatiko with the District Five. I'm one of the nighttime commanders. Let me provide you guys with some statistics for your area. In terms of burglaries, there were two reported, which matches the same report amount as December. Motor vehicle thefts are down a little bit. There were five reported compared to seven in December. General thefts, there were fifteen, which is on par with thirteen in December. And thefts on vehicles were way down, only twelve reported as compared to thirty-four in December. Total cost for service is for January, including everything, is eight hundred thirty-seven calls for service in your area, which is up from eight hundred six calls in December. Lieutenant Segusio already provided an excellent tip. So I'll defer to the, the questions from the board and from the community.
Thank you. Are there any, well, I, I assume we could probably follow up with Paula's question about, you know anything about the incident regarding the individual who was hit by a vehicle by Queen Emma Palace?
Paula, you said that was on February 7th?
Yes, I believe so. If I have my memory, you know, I'm losing my, over here, so.
You remember, you remember what time of day it was?
Oh, it was in the morning, because my daughter was coming back to my house. She was in the middle lane when she saw it. And then when I found out later, the man actually was a walker. And I don't know if he was going to cross the street or he was going to go on up past, because we put in, and they put in a new sidewalk along up to Puiva. And he was right there at the driveway for Queen Emma. So he was either crossing the street or he was in the sidewalk. And if he was in the sidewalk, oh, boy, not good.
Yeah, well, I mean, he, not even beating the road, it's kind of shocking.
Yes, yes, yes.
Unfortunately, I don't know any of the specifics now, but I will find out, and I'll get back to you the next meeting.
I heard there might be a law where they can't let it out for some reason. But I did call K I T V and K O H, K H O N, and neither one of them even heard of it. So I thought, wow, that's, that's not good.
Yeah, unfortunately, on the media right now, they're kind of focusing on, on the sensational things. So they, they might have just let that go. But I will find out what information I can, and I'll share it with you next meeting, okay?
That'd be great. If it's going to be you, are you going to be promising us you'll come back?
It should be, but I mean, I'll, I'll explain to my counterpart as well that you guys want that information, so.
I know you're the boss, but four-letter word, right? So, so just thought I, just thought I'd throw that in, that we really want to know what that was.
I'll make sure and get as much information as I can.
No, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
We'll give you a sucker too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board for District One? Are there any questions from the community? Hearing none, thank you very much, Lieutenant. We appreciate you coming out, and if you could follow up, we greatly appreciate that too.
I'll make sure I do that. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Please stay safe, and thank everybody in your division for their job. Thank you.
I will, sir. Thank you.
Next up, we have Neighborhood Security Watch. Paula.
Yes, I noticed we have some people in the audience here, so District Five might want to know who all these people are. We will be having a Neighborhood Security Watch meeting on Saturday, this Saturday, the 24th, at Lana Kila, because no one in the legislature will let us use the school or get us places where we need to meet with two electric plugs and some quiet time so that we can show some movies, et cetera. Anyone wanting to go to that particular meeting at 9:00 AM at Lana Kila are all welcome. Got parking and it's able for disabled people also. The second thing is that I want to say we've had an increase, but it's very minimal according to our boss, who is Matt Tinay, T I N E Y. There, we, we've had two, one arrest of two different women who have come at night to get food from somebody's house and they walked off with their shoes. And another woman who went all, all over Nuiu Anu. And District Five was kind enough to help us with coming and getting her. She finally ended up in a car sleeping, but had opened up as many cars as she could. She didn't do smash and grab, but she did with taking things out of the cars with the new shoes she had on. So that's another homeless person. Other than that, I don't know what 573, which is, I think, our beat, 573, what we're showing, because we want to say we're working hard. And so that might be bringing down the statistics from eight thirty-seven, maybe below eight hundred. Thank you.
No problem. We appreciate the assistance from the Neighborhood Security Watch as well.
I want to tell you that you're also welcome to park at my house during the night or day when you have to do reports, because I know going back to District Five is very far. So all you have to do is let me know, so my dog doesn't bark. But even at night, you can come in. Our street is friendly, so we won't turn you into the police.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anyone have a, a question for the Neighborhood Security Watch?
Oh, I forgot to tell you the number you can call for our boss if you want to join us, because we have the best security watch. You got that? Write that down. One eight oh eight, three eight two, two seven, six nine. And his name is Matt Tinay, T I N E Y, or A Y. Sorry, he's my boss. Yeah, so I better, I better spell his name right, sorry. And don't forget that everything is education, engineering, and environment for us. All the E's, remember, and then enough crime, okay? Thank you.
Paula, a couple of things. First off, I, I did say that there was an opportunity to have meeting spaces, but I don't know about on a Saturday. So if you want to follow up on that, I've offered. Secondly, I, I just wondered, my understanding is the police scanners are going to go to an encrypted type of communication. Is that going to crimp the, the ability of the Neighborhood Security Watches in any way, or? I mean, have you heard about that, or what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm sure Lieutenant Segusio has, because he knows everything. So I just want to, I just wanted to say that we appreciate everything, because I know District One and District Five work closely together. And there, there's an officer named N G. I don't know where he works, but he's helping Matt and another lady that's really working hard. So anyone wants to come to that meeting, but you got to wear shoes, because it's a school.
Okay, thank you very much. And for anyone who's, anyone who doesn't know, they, their organizations are very professional. They do a wonderful job. It's very impressive, so thank you, Paula.
Oh, write that down.
Next up on the agenda, we have our filling of vacancies. We have a, two vacancies in Subdistrict One, which is around Punch Bowl. If anyone in the public might be interested, we can define exactly where those boundary limits are. So is there anybody in the audience that may be interested in serving in one of those seats? Hearing none, we can move on. Next up, we have, we have a little different agenda tonight that we're going to start, and we have a report from our non-board events. And first off, I don't think I let her know in advance, and that is a report from Ray G. If maybe you just want to discuss a tad about Yawahu Metro Planning Organization. Oh, sorry, sorry, you know, I, I made a mistake. I wasn't looking correctly. We have Board of Water, and we have Jimmy. He's going to take my spot, since he'll probably, you're, you're a much better. Sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shiano. I'm supporting Board of Water tonight. For my main break report, there was only, well, main break report for January, there was only one main break that happened in January. That was on January 18th, 24th. That was a 12-inch diameter PVC pipe on seventy-foot-high road, and that was originally installed in 2007. Now I'll move on to my general water announcement. Going to be talking about the $100 rebate, which is for a limited time only. The Board of Water Supply is providing its customers with a big offer of a $100 rebate on water sense labeled toilets. That's 1.28 gallons per flush toilet. This is more than double the usual rebate amount, and it's only offered for a limited 90-day period through April 18th. This special rebate is limited to four per. This special rebate is limited to four per household and ten for a commercial. For more information, please go to W W W dot Board of Water Supply dot com slash rebate. And have some updates from concerns last month concerning the water system improvement project in Lower New Wano. One question was, when were the materials expected to arrive? And I'm here to report that the materials, all materials are expected to arrive in April twenty four. And there was a concern, a question about when the start date is gonna be. The notice to proceed is now scheduled for April eighth this year. However, work cannot start until we receive approval from the state historic president committee. Please note the feedback is, uh pushback on the N G P of to proceed that no additional cost to the Board of Water Supply and was caused by shipping delay. And finally, there was a concern or question about how folks can get a refund on water that they use to clean the streets from a main break. And here to report that. People are welcome to file a claim with the Board of Water Supply for the extra water used. And in the future, if debris is left over from a main break, please contact the Board of Water Supply at eight oh eight, seven four eight, five thousand and press option one. We can send someone to clean the area. That concludes my monthly report, so I'll be having to field any.
Are there any questions in the board? Audrey. Can everybody, I'm sorry, can everybody here in the audience, Audrey?
No.
Okay.
No. Yeah, I know it might be. Sorry, we're sharing uh.
We need sign.
Can you, uh, early now, any breakage, just contracted to fix the road, just coming back in thirty days. Going on sixty days. So what's up?
Follow up on the, sorry, you said it's a main break. Within Alika?
Yeah.
Follow up.
Action prior in your record. Thank you, Jimmy.
I'll follow up.
Thank you. Are there, uh Paula?
Um, I want to know when you get a water main break and you have to use thousands of gallons of water to get all the mess cleaned up. But also, why do you make the homeowner pay five hundred dollars, which I did, half of the damage? Um, is that gonna be changed where you responsible? The water main broke on a a Lika, it came down and flooded my house and the fire department came. So how much insurance are you gonna take from the people? Or has that been discussed?
Off the top of my head, I am not sure. I can take that question back and.
Because I like my five hundred back. That would be nice for Valentine's Day.
Uh Paula, can you be more specific? I mean, is this?
A water main broke, a water main broke on Alika. It came down through the back of my house.
What time, what's the five hundred dollars? What is?
They made me pay my own insurance. They made me pay pay for everything.
Hey, but what I'm saying is, uh uh there is a little bit of confusion, not the actual water that you need to clean. This was probably property damage or your insurance.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
No, thank you, lawyer. I'm not good at that. Thank you.
Oh, it was property damage.
Okay.
Ask if if water supply would take care of that. Okay, so if someone can make a point.
Okay. And it's good when they come back to clean up, but they don't get everything. There's mud everywhere, so. We had to use a lot of water to clean up.
Jimmy's gonna follow up with that. He did state that, if I'm saying it correctly, that if you do use excess water, then you can submit a claim for that. So the the water usage itself, if you want to have debris, then you're supposed to call the Board of Water Supply first. I assume if it's an emergency situation, that's different, but if if it's.
It was emergency.
Well, and and yeah, that's, I can understand that, but nor in normal circumstances, however normal you could say that water main break is, you would call the the water department first.
They were called.
Okay.
They were called, yes, and the fire department.
Are are there any other questions from the Board of Water Supply?
Uh, Charles Smith, I have a question.
Yeah, bye. Please go ahead.
Uh, basically, the the rebate link that he gave is not a valid link, so I was wondering if we could get the correct link.
I'll um check what's going on with that. W W W dot Board of Water Supply dot com slash rebate.
Yeah, at least the Board of Water Supply, but it says it's basically a four oh four link, so oops, sorry, nothing found.
Yeah, I think it, did you add an S at the end of rebate?
I can try that.
Think that should work.
Yep, looks like it did. So it's rebates plural.
Thank you. It's great when we, it's great when we, those few times we can actually solve problems. So, thank you. Are there any other questions for uh the Board of Water Supply? Seeing or hearing none? Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you very much and uh look forward to their follow-ups. Thank you. Okay, I better get my glasses out so I don't miss anything again. It's Hold on, just one second. We're having technical problems. All right. Okay, so next up, we we s- since we skipped the board initially and we we uh already dealt with the filling of the vacancies, next up we have reports from non-board events. And for that, we have Ray G. to report on the Iwahu Metro Planning Organization, which we which uh Ray G. has graciously agreed to uh attend for our board. Ray G., are you with us?
Here I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Sorry, I have a turtle tank next to my window over here, so it's kind of loud. Um, thank you for letting me participate on the Iwahu Metropolitan Planning Organization Monthly Meeting for the Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, most of the thirty some odd boards are represented and our board is not. So in accordance with the bylaws, um I have to attend or the chair attend four meetings before we can be added on as a member. So I attended my first meeting last month and they discussed the Transportation Improvement Program, which is a planning tool. And it's an opportunity for the city and the state um to get together as well as other transportation-related organizations to propose projects. And it is from the year twenty twenty two, and don't mind me looking this way because my report is here, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five. And there are three projects relating to Poly Highway that you probably are familiar with. The first one being the Poly Highway Rock Rockfall Mitigation. And they uh put in the amount of one point seven million for that project. There's no specific locations as to where on Poly Highway right now, but we could probably find out that information later. There's another project that's the same title, Poly Highway Rockfall Mitigation, and the state put in six hundred sixty eight thousand. And lastly, there's the Poly Highway Route sixty one resurfacing and lighting improvements. Vineyard Boulevard Two Cam Highway, and right now it has no money in there, so I think it's a placeholder. And every so often, these documents get updated if there's other projects that the community or the departments want to implement. Eighty percent of it is federally funded by the Federal Highway Administration and twenty percent is locally funded with a match. How do I know? Because I used to be a transportation planner. I used to do the dip and dip eons ago, but that's all they have for now. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm monitoring the projects that relate to our area and I'll be reporting on that to you. Um, so that's it for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. That that's very helpful. Are there any questions from the board or the community? Paula, go ahead.
I want to know if that's gonna include, uh you talk about rock fall. That's gonna include the part where you enter from Pa'oa going Kailua bound. That whole wall keeps having rocks falling down and I asked somebody to look at that a while back. Uh, I would say, let's see, how old am I now? It would have been probably two, three, two, two years ago. And um I had asked um Senator Rhodes to look into it. So I wanted to know if that's gonna include from Pa'oa and up to the Alka Penafal side.
I'll do some research on that and get back to you. And then if not, then we can ask our senator again for that information. Um, yeah, I'll I'll try to research that in the documents first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Some big rocks coming by. Yeah, but they clean up regularly, so they might not realize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, thank you very much. Thank you very much, and uh we appreciate your attendance at these meetings and and letting us know about whatever projects might come forward. Thank you. Okay, next up, and we did uh reorder this, is the Papakalea Community Concerns. Adrian?
Uh, just wanted to share that um our annual health fair will be March second at uh Lincoln Elementary School from ten to two. Uh, we have um an art contest at Pa'oa Elementary, Lincoln, um essay contest for Roosevelt and Stevenson. Um, Queen Emma Clinic will be there doing health screening. And so we have over forty vendors expected and food trucks. So we're inviting everybody to come out and join us that day. Uh, we will also uh be presenting at um uh Carol Fukunaga's um community meeting at Stevenson on February twenty seventh. Other than that, just quite busy doing what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any follow-ups uh from the community or the board for about Papakalea? Hearing none, uh thank you very much, Adrian. We appreciate uh reporting on that. So next up, we have residents or community concerns. Are there any residents or uh that want to present any concern? Okay, well. Yeah, Jill is typically reserved for communities people, but go ahead, please.
Well, I'm actually coming to you as a community, not a board member, and I just want to state that we are still having trouble every week with significant cutting of the trees in New Wana Stream right behind my house. So for the last three weekends from Friday evening until Sunday, it's constant cutting of the trees. We can hear them falling hard into the stream, uh damaging a portion of the stream from what we can see sometimes with the huge branches that fall down there. And they're just cutting that whole thing down back there and nobody seems to be concerned as to why New Wana Congregational Church has decided to take all the trees out of the stream. It's a huge portion of it, and I'm just very concerned as a community and as as a resident, a resident.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, as I recall, wasn't there gonna be some follow-up with um Representative Takahashi? I guess we can ask when or.
Yes. I received, I received a quick call from um one of the representatives in your office. But I, other than that, there was has been no follow-up. It's been this long dragged out. I just don't know where to reach out for help, and at this point, I'm just, you know, kind of beside myself, so I'm just gonna back away. But we should be very concerned of what's happening back there. Is somebody even monitoring it? Are they altering the streamline? Because now it's gone up further past where we can see. They took down a hundred-year-old mango tree that was full of fruits and everything in the area right across from the stream, and they're just working their way all the way up there.
Okay, um I see uh Representative Takahashi wants, I think, wants to respond. So uh Representative, if you, if if you want to say something now, please go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, did DLNR reach out to you at all? Because they were, they said that they were gonna go. They said the situation sounded like it might warrant a permit because of the impacts of the stream, like you're saying. Did they, did someone from DLNR get in contact with you? I know they were gonna reach out to the church directly.
Um, so what was, what was your, I think someone from your office reached out for me. Um, I can't remember his name.
Halton, probably.
Yes, so we had a really nice, long conversation. He said he was gonna do more research and then he'd get back to us. He was gonna reach out to the DLNR. And we never heard anything back.
Yeah, so we got the assessment. I thought we had asked if we could share your information with them also in addition to having them reach out directly to the church about the work they're planning.
No one's reached out, and and again, and I'm not exaggerating here, like from the time we wake up in the morning all the way to late afternoon, I've even driven into the property to see it, and branches, like you could not believe are just being cut off of the tree and falling straight into the stream. They're not even doing it in smaller portions. And they're taking the trees, I mean, so they said that they hired an arborist. We spoke with him. They were gonna just give certain branches that may have been rotten, um pointed that out and then cut. But at this point, they're taking entire trees down to just stumps, and now they're leaving the stumps there because they don't want to alter the the river and bankment like they did in our property next, in the property next door to us. But, I mean, it's every weekend now.
Okay, I I'll give DLNR a call tomorrow and see what happened with that. Um, Joe, I know I have some of your contact information, both email and phone number. Is that okay to share with DLNR?
Yes, if they call me, I would love for that to happen, but it's, I mean, this has been ongoing for months and months now. And, you know, it's just, it's only gonna get worse. Like, I'm very concerned. Not only are we hearing all of the street racing now that's on the Poly Highway. You know, it's no longer blocking out the noise from the churches now, but just what is the damage that is causing back there to our streams?
Okay, um I'll check in about whether, what kind of conversations the department had with the church, and I'll also ask them to um get in touch with you directly. To give, so that you can share what's been going on and um talk to them directly about that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Representative.
Thank you, Representative. Um, hey, thank you. Are there any other uh community concerns? Hey, just Paula. Uh Paula, you you're muted.
Thank you. One of my kids helped me. Um, that um stream started um asking Ed Case to do it, and then they didn't have the equipment or something. And then uh Senator Dos Santos got involved and then told Ed Case um not to get involved but that that city could handle it. But what happened was when it was cleaned up above on Puiva. I don't know if anybody talked to the bottom end of the stream or the top or the bottom, talked to the top because water runs downhill, as I remember it, and mud is was coming down also. So now it's complicated with mud and people calling me, and then I I'm not going in any streams. I used to, but I'm not going anymore um to maybe clean out the mud, and she's talking about branches and everything. So who does that? Because that's all owned by the church on both sides of the stream. So um I don't know if they talked to the top to do clean, make sure they cleaned it well before it went to the bottom to clay bond.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, yeah, these are really actually supposed to be about three minutes. I, Jill is a newer board member, but just so you know, all the board members, if if you want to put something on the agenda, I'm I'm very happy if you ideally reach out to me ten days before, but I could do it sooner, but it just might not get in if if it doesn't align. ideally reach out to me 10 days before, but I could do it sooner, but it just might not get in if it doesn't align, need submitting to the neighbor permission. So yeah, please, please know that anything, I've never denied it from a board member. I have denied from the community good reason, you know. At least I thought. But yeah, anytime you want to add something to the agenda, please let me know. Paula?
Can we get the telephone number and the easiest way to get ahold of you because we have now a new Rachel? And then their number I had before changed, I understand, without calling the main, the 768-3710.
I'm sorry, who are you referring to?
Our new person, Rachel. Doesn't she have a direct number that she can talk about you? She can talk about you.
Well, I will.
I used to have to go to Zodan. He had his own number.
So I'll email that information after the meeting.
That'd be great.
And that way everyone will have it.
Because they're calling me to ask, then I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. So hearing no further community concerns, we can move on our agenda. And first off, we have Director Kim Hashiro as the mayor's representative is the director here.
Hi, I'm here.
Please go ahead.
Hi, so, hi, everyone. This month's highlights from the mayor's newsletter, which I will link in the chat after I finish my report. Just wanted to go over a few things. So first of all, you'll notice some bright yellow rescue tubes are making our beaches safer. First responders jump into action during an emergency at January City Council hearing. You may have heard about that in the news. Kahuku community meets to discuss a new swimming pool and recreation center. An authentic Kula show prepares to debut at the Waikiki Shell. And a new sculpture is unveiled at Honolulu's Inha Park. The Honolulu Zoo was also nominated for Best Zoo in America by USA Today. And what we're asking community members to do, if you'd like to support the zoo, I'll also be including a link in the chat where you can vote daily for the zoo. It's current, our zoo is currently in fourth place behind some really well-known large zoos. So it's really an honor to be nominated, and hopefully our Honolulu Zoo will do well. The Neighborhood Commission Office is also hiring neighborhood board assistants to engage in public awareness for community support. Neighborhood assistants help coordinate neighborhood board chairs with neighborhood board chairs and produce written reports to members of the public. If you know of anyone who's interested, I will include an email address and a phone number in the chat. DTS also included a number of bus service modifications. I know that that's very important to this community and to the board. So it's, it's quite a long report. I'm going to copy and paste that into the chat also, so you have information. And it will include an email address if anyone has questions regarding the content that's covered. So I'm going to move on to follow-up issues from last meeting. So the first is regarding bus route number 121. There was a question from Pat Tyrell. If an emergency occurs that causes Poli Highway to close, can the following suggestions be looked into and implement? This came up due to a landslide closing the Poli Highway. So can number 121 Old Poli Road run earlier? There were no buses at 6:00 AM from the Winward side going into town. And DTS's response was that Route 121 was discontinued in August 2023 and would not be reinstated in the event of an emergency closing of Poli Highway. During the townbound closure of Poli Highway on December 20th to 24th of last year, shuttle service was implemented for Route 66, which is downtown Bishop Street, using Old Poli Road slash Kimo Drive as a turnaround to accommodate the townbound Poli Highway bus stops, operating approximately every 30 minutes from 5:30 AM to 11:15 PM. The bus is adept at detouring routes and adjusting service when road weights are blocked and has a wide collection of plans from previous detours operated over the years. The public is notified of the bus detours through service disruption bulletins posted on the bus website and on various apps, including Hey the Bus, The Bus 2, et cetera. And you can also call the Bus Transit Information Line at 808-848-5555, pressing number two, and this is, this service is available daily from 5:30 AM to 10:00 PM. For major disruptions to the bus service, DTS may issue a press release for broadcast by media outlets. Moving on to the next question, which was also responded to by DTS, Board Member Sylvia Young had two questions regarding handy vans. What happened to the DTS handy van proposal to use taxi vouchers to address the handy van shortage? This was discussed at the board's November 2023 meeting. And the response was that the Honolulu Rate Commission continues to review the DTS proposal to create a taxi voucher system for handy van riders. A final decision has not been reached. The second question was, is it possible to use the handy van if you have a disabled placard but can't drive anymore? Sylvia would like to use it due to the bus stop being too far. And the response is that a person's eligibility for the handy van is not determined based upon the position of a disability parking placard or their inability to drive. For more information and to apply, please contact the Handy Van Eligibility Center at 808-538-0033 to schedule an appointment. The last question was regarding NPDES federal law compliance. And Roberta Chun mentioned that a design for a rainwater system will be needed in the planning of developments so that the rain can be absorbed into the ground. For example, JMTC has a system which contains water that goes into a water catchment area to be absorbed into the ground to refill aquifers. The Department of Planning and Permitting responded that there are existing processes in place to address stormwater runoff from new departments as part of the city and county of Honolulu's NPDES program. All new developments are reviewed under the city's building permit or the grading permit process for compliance with DPP's Admin Rules, Chapter 3, Rules Relating to Water Quality. And these rules are available on DPP's website, and I will include the link also in the chat. So that actually concludes my report. Just to make one note, there was a question regarding water runoff and penalty and charges to homeowners. So this was actually assigned to the Board of Water Supply, and it actually needed to be reassigned to DFM Stormwater Division. So next month, I will have a response from DFM. Any questions?
Thank you, Director. Any questions for the mayor's representative? Well, can you speak up? Because we don't see. Oh, Pat, Pat, go ahead, please.
I want to know if there is a plan that can be in place so that if the Poli Highway gets closed again, that we don't have to try to scramble and look for announcements on different websites and also the app? Because I did, the night before, I was trying to figure out how I was going to get to work, and I didn't find anything. So I think we need a plan in place that we know that if that happens again, then those bus routes, the 66 going through Opali Road, is going to be available. Because we didn't know, we had no clue, and we did try to find out.
Okay. Okay, I, I will pass that on and give that feedback back to DTS.
Yeah, because we really need to know ahead of time. Trying to find out, like I said, late at night, you know, trying to figure out how I was going to get to work the next day was very, very limited. There wasn't any information available. So that's not fair for us who hold bus passes. You know, we can't ride the bus. We have to, you know, do an Uber, which is very expensive. So we need to know what's going to be in plan because we carry, you know, we hold, we are bus pass holders, and we buy it thinking that we can use the bus to get to work, and we can't because we have no idea what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess it sounds like good, good planning by the bus, DTS for buses, but for communications. So yeah, if they can improve their communications to, to the customers.
Okay.
Are there any other follow-ups or questions? Paula?
I just want to tell you that we do have people in the neighborhood now because they can't walk across the highway. And they do have bus passes. They are now riding taxi. So to go across the highway would be murderous. So they get a taxi and get down to St. Francis and pay, I think it was $13 or $14 one way just to get down to go to a doctor, et cetera. So this is getting really serious where we, we're just isolated. And I want everybody, and I agree with what Pat is saying, what Sylvia is saying, is that try walk across the Poli Highway. Get on your boots and go. Try. It's, it's, it's murderous. It's dangerous. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concern? Harry Nun, thank you very much, Director. We appreciate your time this evening and follow-up on.
Oh, we saw her on TV. You were on TV today. Channel what?
Yes, you were. Yeah, okay, thank you, everyone.
Yes.
Thank you, Director. Next up, thank you. Next up, we have Lynn Robinson from Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam's office.
Aloha Chair. Can you, can you hear me? Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Aloha. Aloha, board. Aloha, community members. Lynn Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. Lisa sends her regrets. She's traveling, so she wasn't able to be here tonight. I will try to fill her shoes. I have put Councilmember's newsletter, a link to all of his newsletters, actually, to include his recent February 2024 newsletter in the chat along with my contact information. I am the Constituent Services Director in Councilmember's office. So please hold on to that information for any of your community concerns. I, I do have some updates that I just pulled from New Anucentric risers that we put in. But first of all, I just, for one moment, wanted to circle back with Board Member easily, if I could, only to say, I'm super sorry to hear that they're still chopping down all those trees. I think that it was some months back when the arborist had come out, and I did have a lengthy conversation with your mom. And we were very, very hopeful that they were heeding the advice of the arborist not to keep chopping things down. So of course, we had put in the request for, for an investigation over there and detailed that we were concerned about the, you know, the impacts that had already happened and caused the flooding over there and, you know, continuing impacts on the stream if they were going to continue to cut down those trees. And then it was, you know, told that it, you know, wasn't a city issue. It wasn't necessarily a Department of Facility Maintenance, Stream Maintenance issue that was DLNR. If any of that changes, and, you know, and DLNR, you know, says something different, please. You know, I'd be happy to work. Obviously, we work very closely with Representative Takana Mucci's office, and we'll just, you know, do what we can to make sure that we're not ruining our natural resources and causing more damage over there. So I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, let you know that I did have that conversation with your mom, and we were just super hopeful that they were stopping. But, okay, I will keep in touch. And again, I will reach out to Representative Takana Mucci's office, just in case there's anything more that we can do on the city side.
Lynn, before you, before you go on, if I can make one comment, I apologize, but.
No worries.
Paula, you did mention earlier that I, I think, I mean, I heard this before, that you suggested that the council member told Ed Case's office that it wasn't Ed Case's purview to get involved. And I, I know when the council member heard that, he was like, that's not really what happened. So I, I just want to make that clear as, as the council member, that that's not exactly what transpired. So I don't know what exactly did, but.
I appreciate the opportunity to clear that up.
Yeah.
It gets very confusing. It gets very confusing.
There may be some misunderstanding.
Yeah, it gets very confusing for everyone about what city, what state, what's federal for our road streams, all kind, you know, land in general. So I think what, the way that it went down was that someone had reached out to Congressman Case's office. And Congressman Case's office knew that it was not a federal. Yeah, that's cool. That's great. And they then knew that it was.
Because that's where it was cleaned before. They're the ones that cleaned it before.
Yeah, so, well, at this point, it's now, you know, they, they're intuitively, they thought that it would be a city issue because the city does take care of so many of our streams. And then the city brought to our attention that now it's the Department of Land and Natural Resources. So now it's, it's come to a state issue. The good news is, Paula, that you brought it to everybody's attention, and that Jill and her family are all over it, and the community is paying attention. And obviously, Representative Takana Mucci's office has been in close touch with DLNR and will now look for some results. So it, yeah, I think it's landed where it's supposed to. But, you know, we'll all continue to work together. Thank you, Chair, for letting me clear that up.
Thank you.
So I.
I think you need to. Sorry. I think you need to know that I sent all that out to everyone. Ed Case, everybody down the line. So I guess they ended up where it was supposed to with city. But last time, they wouldn't get involved. Yeah, that's history, though.
Thank you.
That's how old I am. Okay.
That's how committed you are.
But I wish I known.
That's okay. We're, we're all working through it. The request to. There was a request to repair the rock wall on Nuanu Poli Road. And that request has been referred to the Department of Facility Maintenance. I will continue to get updates to our constituent and to the board about that. There was a request for, there's a broken sidewalk drain fronting 923 Nuanu. That was a big problem. It turns out that that was private property, and a notice of violation has been issued. We've had requests to repaint the sidewalks at Nuanu and Kukini. And just, and the Department of Facility Maintenance has generated a service request saying that those will be repainted and completed by the end of February. Saying that those will be repainted um and completed by the end of February. I'm gonna pause for a moment to let everyone know that the, while we, we have a, a, a good system. That we call the, you know, Request for Information and Service Report Riser System at the city. The, the part that I don't find out, that our office doesn't find out unless we have eyes on or hear back, is when these things are completed. So there's no, there's no mechanism to do that. So I always appreciate anyone's feedback to the office. Either to say, you said under fe- February and those crosswalks are not repainted yet. Can you please follow up? Or to say, good news, they painted those crosswalks. So feel free to reach out to our office either way. And just one more, um there's some, uh I guess there's some illegally dumped items at New Uanu. On New Uanu Poly Drive after the Polly Heva Place. Um and this is a some, a pretty rec- recent request. It did go to ENV. I'm gonna put a number in the chat for um the City Refuge Division. I have no problem with anyone reaching out to our office. We can absolutely put in these requests. We've just found that when constituents reach out to this call line, um sometimes they're getting quicker results. So that's for illegal dumping and like I said, I'll put that in the chat. Um I think I'm gonna stop there. I know it's getting kinda late. And if anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them back to the council member.
Are there any questions from the board or the council members or representatives? Paula.
Um a while back, I did send sixteen to twenty pictures of all the things in the New Uanu area. You talk about sidewalk being broken and water, whatever, however you posted that. But there is another one on fifty-five thousand where the water's running up and over the sidewalk. So no wheelchairs can go through there. They have to go on the other side of the road. And that's the house where they have the goats and the tortoises. Fifty-five thousand.
Okay, I'm gonna.
There are other places.
And I can get back.
There are other places I can give you by phone where they, where I'm asking for help. But I did ask the state on aging if they could help us. And I don't know what they did with all the pictures we sent to them.
But it's a, it's an issue about being able to access the sidewalk?
Yeah, and the ramps and the, I did all of that.
Okay, that sounds like.
Whole area.
That sounds like a city issue. So I can help you with that.
Yes, it is. It is a city.
Okay.
Uh I got to the Polly Highway too, but nobody listened to me. So DOT is about um the disabled and how they're having a hard time. So.
You haven't heard that?
The city list, there's no ramps for people even in wheelchairs at all in any of the corners. So. Um I can't give you, I can't give you the list, but I don't know what they did with the pictures. They sent it to somebody in a dark hole, I guess.
Well, I could, I can follow up. Maybe, let's see, if we can try to find.
Whenever you have time, call me. I'll tell you.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Of course.
Are there any other questions from the board or uh the council members or representatives? Are there any questions from the community or anyone? Hearing none. Uh Lynn, thank you very much for coming out this evening. We appreciate any follow-ups you can do. Be very appreciated.
No problem. Thank you, Chair. Have a nice night.
All right, next up, we have Governor Josh Green's representative. I see William here, so please, go ahead. Okay, I think you're muted, William. Still not getting anything.
No more.
Uh actually, um it looks like you're unmuted, so maybe your microphone is having. Now you're unmuted. Uh we, yeah, you might be having trouble with your microphone. Um. William, if it's okay, uh we, we can go, uh we can proceed with Senator Rhodes and we'll come back to you. Okay? Thank you. Uh Senator.
Yes, good evening, Chair, Board, uh those attending. Uh Paul Mendez, um I'll be briefing uh on behalf of Senator Rhodes. Um so first, uh I'd like to start with uh in an update to the feral pig problem that's been going on. Uh the Senator met recently with the uh the Wahoo Pig Hunters Association and Council Member Tyler Dos Santos TAM. And Lynn, thank you. Uh Opa has. Is having problems uh um confr- uh conforming to certain requirements set forth by DLNR in their permitting process. We, uh the Senator and uh the council member agreed to send a joint letter with council mem- with the council member to DLNR. Requesting that they work with the Pig Hunters Association on the permitting process. And at the same time, uh the Pig Hunters Association will reach out to DLNR to address the challenges they're experiencing with the permitting process as well. Uh next, uh there's been a three mil- uh there's three million in capital improvement project funds was released. To my MIA elementary school to replace their existing telecommunications system. With an enhanced public address system. Next, uh last week, the Department of Health reported six hundred fifty-nine new COVID cases with a seven-day average of ninety-six cases. And thirteen deaths for the, for that weekly period. Uh the Senator encouraged you to stay up to date on your COVID shots as well as your flu shots. If you're over sixty, there's a new vaccine for respiratory syncytial virus, RSV, which is also a good idea to get. The Senator received numerous complaints regarding the feral chickens in the community. As in past occurrences, uh he will use some of his legislative funds to have them removed. If you have any hotspots, uh please let him know. And lastly, please don't hesitate to call uh his office at eight zero eight five eight six six one three zero. With questions or concerns, or you can email him at SENroads@capital.hawaii.gov. Uh that completes my brief. Uh I'll stand by for any further questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the Senators representative from the board? Any, oh Paula.
I asked the Senator last time if he could help get these uh helmets on people. So we don't have any more dead children and motor scooter people. So if those laws get, could be, be put in place like of the bicyclists, um we might save some more people. No helmets and, and queens get plenty people that have died. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mason.
Uh you were talking about that feral chickens in the community. The. I, here in Pohua, we still have problems with chickens. These are in the uh Parks and Recreation Park. Where they came digging up the ground and everything. And this been going on for a while. So I, I don't know. Nobody seems to care, I guess. I don't know. You have any complaints from the Pohua area?
Yes, uh is that the, the Park and Recreation? Is that?
That's Booth Park.
Say again?
Booth Park.
Booth? Booth Park?
Yes.
Um oh, I know we, I know we had sent to try to uh. Pick some of the uh, the feral chickens in the park over by. I gotta, I, I can't remember the street names, but I'll, I'll take note of that, sir, and uh I will definitely follow up with you.
Yes, I live right across the street from the park.
Mason, um if I can break in, I, I think the council, Lynn from Council Member uh Tyler De Santos's TAM's office. Probably has some input on this because I think, you know, Booth Park would be covered by the city. So if, if uh, if we could take just a moment and hear from you, Lynn, would you like to chime in?
I would, absolutely. Um that is, yeah, it, it would be a city issue. And I would be happy to put in a request for the removal of the chickens and follow up with you. Um, do you mind emailing my, um a request to me so that I have your contact information, Mason?
Email you?
Yeah, if you look, I can, or you can put your email in the chat to me.
I, I can email you.
Yeah.
Yeah, whoever would like for me to follow up with them about the request, yeah.
Yeah, I'll email Lynn um your address, Mason, so she can follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So are there any follow-up questions to the um Senator representative? So Paula.
I wanna know how much are they paying these uh chicken people to pick up the chickens? Because they like to take them back to New Uanu Park and drop them off in the back of their truck. So how do you prove how many they've caught? And how do you keep track of that? I've seen it happen.
Who would answer?
Yeah, my understanding, there, there's a city program. I don't know if there's a state program. So it might be different results depending.
City program.
Okay, well, that, there again, that would be Lynn, probably not the Senators.
So, so the city's program.
Oh, I thought you.
Okay, yeah, the city has.
Sorry, Lynn, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry. The city has a pretty concrete program now, although it's not robust enough to take care of all of it. But they um, they do what they're, they say is safely dispose of the feral chickens. So if you're seeing chickens getting trapped in one place and dropped off in another, that's not the city. They have, they have processes in place to dispose of the chickens. That's probably somebody that's not playing by the rules or not being particularly helpful that's doing that.
HPD doesn't answer the calls for chickens.
Um, well, i- if I can chime in, might I suggest if, if you see that, know the particulars, like what they're doing. If they have a label like identifying themselves, things like that, then you can report that to the council member's office. Because I would suspect too that that's a violation of their contract. And bottom line is you have to report the violations or it's gonna, that's what I would suggest.
I just think chickens are not br- are branded like cows and deer and all that kind of thing they do on Maui.
What I'm saying is, if you see the, if you see any of the contractors releasing chickens into an area. Then that's probably not within the bounds of their contract. So that's what I'm suggesting. If you see that, if you provide details, like for instance, if you could take a picture, that'd be fantastic. But any details, that's what.
They had the picture and everything and then HPD wouldn't do anything with it. But I wasn't.
I would suggest following up with the council member's office and let it go, you know.
And he'll go catch them?
No, but Paula, Paula, this is Lynn. And so if at any time you have any problem hearing back from any department. About any evidence, about anything that you're presenting to them. That, that is um a function of our office to follow up. And tr- and do our best to facilitate your communication with that department, including HPD.
Okay.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Lynn.
Hopefully, everyone that calls about it, I'll refer them to you folks.
Sounds good.
Uh that would be great.
Okay.
Again, does anyone have any questions for Senator Rhodes's representative? Anyone? Hearing none. Well, thank you very much for coming out for the Senator and uh done good work at the legislature and stay busy. I'm sure he is, but thank you. Uh I think before we, we move on, let's go back to the Governor's representative. And William, are, are you ready? Uh you know, we, we still can't hear you. I, I'm afraid. What we could do is, I don't know if you had any follow-up, but we could ask. You could record any questions our board might have and follow up at our next meeting. That may be the only option we have at this point, unless we wanna try again. Is that okay, or? You wanna give me the thumbs up? Okay. So do we have any uh questions or concerns that we can follow up at next month's meeting for the Governor's Representative? Paula.
I wanna know where the signs came, when the signs are gonna be put up by the state. For New Uanu School um for children crossing the street. And I brought this up six, well, after Lara died, that girl. Um the poor girl downtown, um they, they said, oh, you gotta ask for the signs. So I wanna know who, who is gonna do it. They said the state does that, but the city and county puts in the lines for the crossings.
Okay, so William, if you follow up with DOT, I, I would imagine that would be proper organization.
The kids are walking in the middle of the street now.
And, and I'm sorry, can you, can you restate the school, please? Did you say New Uwanui?
New Uanu School, N-U-U.
Okay, New Uwanui New School. Okay, thank you.
Cool heights.
Thank you. Are there any um other question? Well, we don't have questions, but any other concerns or that you'd like? Anybody would like to follow up at our next meeting or the Governor's Representatives? Please speak now. Hearing none. Okay, William, thank you very much. Uh you know, sometimes tech, tech problems just happen, so we appreciate you coming out this evening. And if you'd follow up on Paula's question, we appreciate it and we'll see you at our next meeting. Thank you. Next up, we have uh Senator Takana Nucci, Janet Takana Nucci. Representative, sorry, please go ahead, Representative. I've already given.
No promotion for me yet. Yeah, um actually, Paula, the signs, um that was a request that came from my office. But yes, if Governor's Office could also follow up with DOT, I haven't gotten any response back on that since we put the request in. Would really um, yes, hit that additional follow-up if it spurs anything along. Um if we were, sorry, to backtrack really quick, I know there was a feral chicken conversation. I actually have a bill that's being heard in the Finance Committee on Thursday. That would create a new city and state agency essentially made up of customer service at the city. Plus um DLNR and Department of Agriculture to kind of take a look at this feral chicken issue. Um I pushed this bill last year. It did pass. Um so it's actually moving again this year if anyone's interested in submitting testimony for that. Um my thought behind it was, you know, just, it's kinda time that we all know that chickens are a thing that's, are kinda getting out of control. So kind of all hands on board, state, city, let's just get together and do something about it. Um I'll put the bill in the chat if anyone would like to submit testimony. I greatly appreciate that. Um and then, sorry, to my report. Uh so yeah, so Paula, the crossing signs, yes, no word back, but yeah, we'll continue to follow up with the department. Um on that, um I know we're also waiting on information for you, Paula, about the um hurricane evacuation shelters. Particularly if there's gonna be something closer to um you folks in New Uwanui, either using the school or building the school up. To be able to have that kinda capability, um still following up on what kinda plans we can find out about that. For um emergency preparedness. And then. Oh, and then also the school route um that uh Kalapuni and Megan flagged from the Awailimo. Um street uh down to Pohua Elementary School. Um sorry, I actually didn't get to follow up with DOT. They were the last agency I was trying to see if, if they might be able to help, particularly because, you know, if there was some way maybe safe routes to schools. Could help with that, but I will ping them to hopefully have an update from them or um from them by next meeting. Um that is still on my list of things to kinda look into. Um. I did want some new things, just really quickly. I did want to flag a bill for the board that I also flagged for the Lenika Neighborhood Board. Um this was a bill, um it's House Bill one-six-three-zero. Um I just wanted to fly this for the board and for the communities that are kinda having concerns about monster homes and the overcrowding. Um happening because of monster homes, you know, the stress to the infrastructure, the parking situation, um that kinda thing. So this bill is not about monster homes, but it is a way to try and. It, it's, it's one of the solutions that the state is looking into in trying to build more housing inventory. that the state is looking into in trying to build more housing inventory in general. I just have a little bit of concerns with the bill that I'm trying to work out with my colleagues here. Because so essentially, some things the bill does that have me a little concerned about how it might impact, you know, our kind of denser residential areas are, it's going to allow three residential dwellings per lot. So one primary dwelling and two ADUs. Right now, we can only do one ADU. Um, and also, though, it lowers the minimum subdivision of a lot to 2,000 square feet. I believe right now in Honolulu County, it's 3,500 square feet. So, you know, people can subdivide their lots smaller, start building more dwellings and then and have these accessory dwelling units for potentially more people to move in. My concern was really trying to write in at least more parking requirements, which hasn't been successful so far. The bill is probably going to pass the House this week. And I'm I'm going to continue to watch it and see what's going on. But did want to flag that for anyone. I know monster homes have kind of started to come up in areas for this board as well. Oh, and sorry, one other thing it does is, right now, our ADUs have owner occupancy requirements in Honolulu County. This would ban owner occupancy requirements. So, you know, I know a lot of the monster homes are kind of being built by these developers, like coming in, buying up people's property, and then, you know, raising the single family dwelling and building monster homes. My concern is, you know, under this new law, they could, you know, come in, buy the property, raise everything, subdivide it, and then start building numerous dwellings on the property. So just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board for anyone in kind of those denser areas. Um. Also, just a couple of quick updates that I can also put information to the chat. AARP is hosting some caregiving workshops for people who need to kind of take care of loved ones and get that kind of support. No registration, no, no memberships, no membership to ARP is necessary. But they do ask that you register at this website I'll put into the chat or call 1-877-926-8300. There's two coming up this weekend, one on Friday, the 23rd, at Central Union Church at 9:30 a.m. And Saturday, February 24th, at Windward Community College at 9:30 a.m. And I put that all in the chat as well for you guys. Um. And if there's any other questions or things I can follow up on, happy to do so.
Thank you. Ray G.
Sorry, I just wanted to mention that Kev Hashiro is the person that's in charge of the city program for feral chickens. So maybe at the next meeting, before she gets off, after her report, maybe you should ask. Board members could ask her about the city program and find out more information. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, Paula?
I brought this up one other time, but I'm going to bring it up again because Maui, they have the axle deer, and they're making farms and stuff so they could use the meat. If we have such a big problem with homelessness, why aren't we doing that with chickens? Because they give you eggs, they fertilize, they kill centipedes, and they do, well, they do squawk. But the roosters also are very good, good in the trees. They keep the burglaries down because once one gets upset, the other two or three or four will go after it. Persons, the last two months, we've had two two incidences where someone was in the yard and the rooster got really upset and the person ran away, the two people ran away. So I think looking at chickens, you might be able to use some of the food. That's my idea.
That is actually spending money.
Uh, thank you.
And I think I brought it up last month.
Yeah, actually, in my bill, there's a number of ways that the city and state would be authorized to both collect the chickens, rather than just having people go out, like there's an option to have the public help with that and how they, what they do with the chickens. There's a number of ways they can dispose of, or if they are able to find a safe way, they can also repurpose the chickens for sale or use it for food if they are able to do it safely.
Thank, thank you. Ray Ray G, did you want to follow up?
Yeah, just a quick one. I work for the Department of Agriculture and I hear, I'm a planner there, but I hear the seniors and authorities talking about the feral chicken issue. Some of the feral chickens are not edible because they need to drink stream water that have, I forgot, nephrosclerosis and all that kind of stuff, and they have a lot of worms. So just to, just an FYI that, you know, some of the chickens may not be edible that are around urban setting because of the environment. But that's it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the representative? Oh, Audrey. Oh, you stood up. I didn't know you wanted to, okay, please, go ahead.
I mean, you talked about the bill for the ADUs. If you're going to, there is, is going to police that?
Sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
Uh, sorry.
Your, the conversation about the bill about the ADUs, that you're going to ban owner builders. So who's going to police that?
The Department of Planning and Permitting is going to be in charge of.
Good luck.
Yeah, that's a concern I raised to the producer and in caucuses here at the House. Heard and understood.
Thank you. Are there are there any other questions or concerns for the representative, Paula?
I know you're with the state, so I was wondering, can't you make the chicken a state bird? You know, like we have the goose and.
Okay, it is getting a little late and we do have other business, so, okay, let's move on from the chickens.
State bird.
I assume there are no other questions. Thank you very much, Representative. We appreciate all your hard work.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you. Uh, so I will, let me go back and just, William posted something in the chat. If you hadn't seen it, he wanted to note from the Governor's report that there was a highlight. Hawaii is the first governmental entity to be certified as a Blue Zones worksite. And so he just wanted us to be aware of that. Thank you, William. Uh, so I will say, we'll ask if there are any other federally or state or local elected officials. Have not been listed, but one of the. Assuming we don't, we are ready for board business. As always, we are encouraged under the Sunshine Law to put on our video. If, especially if we make a decision, we do that, if technically possible, please turn it on. First off, we have a spectrum residential property usage issue. This is from Robert Cordero. He is not able to attend. And he told me initially he wasn't able to attend, but just so everybody knows, there, by his submission, I'm Warner purchased a home on 211 San Antonio Avenue, and it's a residential property, and they are using that as a repeater station. There is an issue with, I guess, big generators going off. Sometimes they go off five to 10 minutes, sometimes maybe a little longer. And Robert believes that the noise level exceeds what is statutory, otherwise prohibited by the statutes, I should say, ordinances of the city. So he has that concern. He did not submit any type of proposed, sometimes he does, but he didn't submit any type of proposed resolution in that regard. But I just wanted to let you know what he asked. I assume, maybe he'll be back at our next meeting, and he can request we take some sort of action at that time, unless one of the board members proposed. But that's really what the issue is. So I don't really have a lot more information on that. I do have more details about some of the points, but basically, I gave you the summary. Are any questions? And I don't, I don't want to minimize this issue, which is an important issue. Is there any other questions? Please let me know. Okay, well, does anybody? I think without more information, it would be really premature for us to consider any actions. But does anybody wish to make so? Make a motion? Okay, hearing none. Um, we can move on. I'll ask Robert next month. We have a potential monster home issue. I hope he's still with us. Oh, good gracious. Uh, Lynn. Ooh, I meant to ask her to stay. So this is at the property on 2761 Pacific Heights Road. This was a property that we, we as a board adopted a resolution, asked the Department of Planning and Permitting to revoke the permit. That, in fact, did happen. And as I recall, the mayor himself cited that particular action as his office's action on monster home issues. There was some activity on the site. I can tell you there is none there. After some initial very, very preliminary activity, it really has ceased. But the neighbor who initiated the first process said that, according to the permit that's posted on the site, that the permit was, I can't remember how to use it, but it was, I guess reaffirmed. That's not quite the legal term, but but our our understanding was it was revoked. There was supposed to be a hearing. That hearing was canceled because the party that submitted the permit withdrew the permit. So we are at a loss to figure out how BPP might have let, have they reinstituted this permit? And I know he had discussions with Tyler DeSantis, Tam's office, specifically Lynn. Fortunately, I guess she did leave. I would have preferred her input. But I can follow up separately with her, and that's something that's like, very concerned about. I just wanted to let the board know that, what we're doing. Are there any questions about that? Otherwise, we move on. Hearing none. We do have, next on the agenda is the traffic safety issues around the Polly Highway. Uh, as Paula reported, there was someone that was hit on February 7. By, assumed by Queen Emma's Palace. Paula, do you want to share anything about that?
I think I covered most of it. The reason I think the person might have been hit by on the sidewalk is that the pole next to the drive is down, going toward Queen Emma Summer Palace. So it wasn't hit sideways or this. I think he might have been there standing and then it hit it. But I don't want to accuse or say anything wrong. I was not a third party like my daughter. She drove past right after it happened, but the woman was on the cell phone and trying to, I guess, maybe getting the ambulance and getting the fire department, but no one seems to know about it. So, uh, that's sad.
Well, I will say.
There's an older man that lived in the area.
Just going to add that after you sent me that text message, I think the next day, I did look in the news reports, and there did seem to be a lack of reporting from the major, you know, the both star advertiser and the TV networks, but I didn't see anything. So I was a little surprised because usually they.
What I wanted to know, is there a special law that, where you don't have to report?
I would assume, I think we had this in the past when there was a question when we had complete streets that there was a recording of all accidents. And someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, as I recall, only, they only report that if the, maybe the fire department or the ambulance are called. So say in other words, when maybe the police stop and the person doesn't want an ambulance or a fire department to check them out, then it's not reported on the accident site. And I can't remember where that's found, but I think it's a city site. And it may be, it may, maybe you can find it by going to the police department's prime website. But there is a reporting of, and I, yeah, very well may be part of that police reporting. You can, you can screen, I think, pedestrian related accidents.
I think so. There's something there that they don't have to report, or I don't know.
Yeah, so I think if there are emergency services vehicles, as I recall, then it should be reported on that site.
Hmm, I think so.
This is merely a reporting. I don't know if there's any proposed action that the board wants to take as a result of this, but it's reporting. So.
Well, it's beginning to show that we don't have lights. And we don't have proper, I mean, now we don't even have the bus, even if you have a bus pass, you can't. For the seniors, it's impossible to cross six lanes. When they're going, coming in at 65 miles an hour, forget it. Okay.
All right, is there anything further on this issue from anybody? Hearing none.
No, I just wondered if anybody heard anything.
Thank you. Hearing none, we can move on to Route 121. We did talk about that.
Can I?
Paula?
Can I ask, can I ask a question? We're talking about safety and all that. I know Dr. had mentioned Deliard. I'm wondering why DOE or somebody doesn't get a bus for the kids from Papa Colaia to ride down to get to school safely and a bus to take them home if they can't solve this with the kids going through there?
Hey.
Just suggestion.
Okay, I, I'm not sure who, I would think you'd have.
I think DOE would have to pay for that. DOE would have to pay for that. Because we've done that in the past for our disabled. So why not for the regular children?
I think that would be a question for one of our elected officials. Okay, so I, I think we talked about Bus 121 and the bus situation in general. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, hearing none, we did keep this this on the agenda, and that was the early trash collection and noise and the placement of dumpsters issues. Are there any follow ups on that? Does anyone want to express questions, concerns, whatever?
Yeah, I just.
Go ahead, Phil.
So I just wanted to kind of, it's still happening, and I don't think, I don't think we're going to get anywhere with the company itself. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's still happening. It's still early in the morning. They're still blocking the access to the, to the bus stop. You know, a lot of folks have to kind of walk off the curb and step off the curb and kind of into the street because of that dumpster in the early mornings on Saturdays. Um, so, you know, I, I don't know at this point.
Um, I think with a lot of these things, I would suggest, maybe if you wouldn't mind following up with Lynn, and just saying, because my understanding is the Honolulu disposal had promised not to block the bus. That was the big thing.
Right.
I think, as I had mentioned, the bus drivers, what I was, what I heard was, first off, it's hard to get the bus people coming to a meeting anyway. They just won't do it. But the bus drivers, they're usually, their policy is, is the bus drivers just complain to the company. Whatever, when I say company, even if that's the city organization, whatever the organization is, they complain. And she's, the bus driver told me that they basically don't even complain. A lot of times, the the company won't follow up on it. So, I mean, I know that's kind of bleak. So I think what I would suggest is just talking, reaching out to someone in Councilmember DeSantis, Tam's office.
So that would be Lynn, Chair?
Well, Lynn, Lynn, I believe is his Chief of Staff. Uh, his former Chief of Staff was, I can't remember, remember his name, but he left. So Lynn, I believe, is the Chief of Staff. So, you know, she would be as good as anybody to talk to. I think she's Chief of this constituency services, too.
Yeah.
And and just remind her that the company made an agreement not to block the sidewalks. I think it's probably tougher for the collection time. I mean, even then, they're not supposed to collect in that time. I know with the city ordinances, you know, the noise ordinances, but sometimes as a practical matter, it may be tough. But at least blocking this, at least blocking the bus stops, if you have handicapped individuals, I don't, you know, seems like to me that the city's. I don't, it seems like to me that the city's got to stop that. I, you know, with ADA issues and such. So, yeah, please do that. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments about that? Hearing none, we can move on to, first is our approval of the November 21st. I did email this to everybody, but Jill, sorry, Jill, I didn't put your email address on my list, and I did this kind of at the last moment. So hopefully, you had copies of those minutes. But I did email them. And by the way, you can find these on the NCO website. There are both the drafts and our approved version, so you will see the drafts if ever you misplace them or whatever. Just go to the NCO website and they are there. Are there any proposed corrections of the November 21st minutes? Hearing none, they will be adopted as distributed. Are there any corrections of the January 16th minutes? There again, they will be adopted as distributed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike, too. Our great secretary for following up. Okay, so now we move on to announcements. As everyone may recall, based on the calendar that this board adopted, we will recess in March. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, at 7 o'clock, as always. I do have a couple of announcement, announcements myself. There is a legislative meeting. I think it's held by Carol Fukunaga, Fukunaga, and it'll be held at Stevenson's, Stephenson Elementary. I believe start at 6:30, and that's February 27th. And that will also include Councilmember, I think, Tyler DeSantis Tam, and definitely Councilmember Calvin, Calvin Say. So anyway, so if you can make that, that probably should be good. It's, that would be very helpful in terms of knowing what's going on, at least legislatively. Next up is, we did receive some information about participating in your democracy. It's mostly about following legislation and submitting testimony. As people that are involved in the community, submission of testimony is actually pretty important a lot of times. And definitely a way to have your voice heard. So if you're kind of unaware how to do it, intimidated by how to do it, don't, don't be. There's plenty of information out there. If you want more information that will guide you through that process, just send me an email. I'll be happy to send you more information. Are there any announcements from the board? Hearing none. I will adjourn the meeting as our business is concluded. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great March and see you in April. Thank you very much.
Good job, Patrick.
Thank you.